Roll call? By voice, please.
Okay. Alderman Lasbada. Alderman Lasbada not present in chambers. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins present. Alderwoman Dahl not present in chambers. Alderperson Lamont Robinson not present in chambers. Alderman Yancey not present in chambers. Alderman Hall not present in chambers. Alderman Mitchell not present in chambers. Alderwoman Harris not present in chambers. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Beal is present. Alderman Chico. Alderman Chico present. Alderwoman Lee. Alderwoman Lee is present. Alderwoman Ramirez not present. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Quinn is present. Alderwoman Gutierrez not present. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez present. Alderwoman Coleman. Alderwoman Coleman present. Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore present. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis present. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea is present. Alderwoman Taylor. Alderwoman Taylor not present in chambers. Alderman Mosley. Alderman Mosley is present. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Rodriguez not present in chambers. Alderwoman Tabarez. Alderwoman Tabarez present. Alderwoman Scott. Alderwoman Scott is present. Alderman Sigchel Lopez. Alderman Sigchel Lopez not present. Alderperson Fuentes. Alderperson Fuentes not present. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Burnett not present in chambers. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Irvin not present. Alderman Talia Pharoah. Alderman Talia Pharoah is present. Alderwoman Cruz. Alderwoman Cruz not present. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Cardona present. Alderman Wagasback. Alderman Wagasback is present. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez not present. Alderman Conway. Alderman Conway not present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Ramirez Rosa not present. Alderman Vegas. Alderman Vegas is present. Alderwoman Mitz. Alderwoman Mitz is present. Alderman Spazato. Alderman Spazato is present. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Vasquez not present. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Napolitano is present. Alderman Riley. Alderman Riley is present. Alderman Knudsen. Alderman Knudsen not present. Alderman Lawson. Alderman Lawson not present. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner is present. Alderman Clay. Alderwoman Clay not present in chambers. Alder... is not present. Not present in chambers. Alderman Martin. Alderman Martin is not present in chambers. Alderperson Monae Happenworth. Alderperson Monae Happenworth not present. Alderwoman Hadden. Alderwoman Hadden not present. Alderwoman Silverstein. Alderwoman Silverstein is not present in chambers. President Protam Nugent.
Present.
President Protam Nugent is present. Oh, Alderman Mitchell? Alderman Mitchell is present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa? He's not present in chambers. He's not... okay. And just as an announcement, Alderpersons Dahl, Burnett, and Silverstein had requested to participate in this meeting remotely due to illness and family emergency. However, pursuant to Rule 59, they do not count towards quorum.
There are... There are 24 members present. We do not have quorum. I'd like a motion to adjourn. So, we... That is... That is... That is 25 members. We still don't have quorum. A motion to adjourn. Alderman Rosa.
Madam President, quorum is 26. We have only 25 members. Therefore, I motion to adjourn.
I have a motion. All those in favor say aye on the motion to adjourn. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Excuse me. Can the sergeant-at-arms please silence the gallery?
Is it a voice roll call?
I kindly asked the folks in the gallery if we could just be a little quieter. Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Calling a roll?
This is... The clerk will be calling a roll call on the motion to adjourn.
I need you.
Yes, Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
We have a few members that are just across the hall in another meeting. If we can just give them a few minutes to get back, I think we can get to 26 in order to have a quorum.
The roll call has commenced. Sorry. Shh. Madam Clerk, the roll has been called. Can you please call the roll on the motion to adjourn?
Calling the roll on the motion to adjourn.
Folks.
Alderman Lasbada not present in chambers. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins is a no. Alderperson Dahl not present in chambers. Alderperson Robinson not present in chambers. Alderman Yancey not present in chambers. Alderman Hall not present in chambers. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell is a no. Alderwoman Harris not present in chambers. Alderman Beal. Alderman Beal is a no. Alderman Chico. Alderman Chico is a no. Alderwoman Lee. Alderwoman Lee is a no. Alderman Ramirez not present in chambers. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Quinn is a no. Alderman Gutierrez not present in chambers. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez is a no. Alderwoman Coleman. Alderwoman Coleman is a no. Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore is a no. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis is a no. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea is a no. Alderwoman Taylor not present in chambers. Alderman Mosley. Alderman Mosley is a no. Alderman Rodriguez not present in chambers. Alderwoman Tabarez. Alderwoman Tabarez is a no. Alderwoman Scott. Alderwoman Scott is a no. Alderman Sigchel Lopez not present in chambers. Alderperson Fuentes not present in chambers. Alderman Burnett not present in chambers. Alderman Irvin not present in chambers. Alderman Talia Pharoah. Alderman Talia Pharoah is a no. Alderwoman Cruz not present in chambers. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Cardona is a no. Alderman Wagasback. Alderman Wagasback is a no. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez not present in chambers. Alderman Conway not present in chambers. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Ramirez Rosa is an aye. Alderman Vegas. Alderman Vegas is a no. Alderwoman Mitz. Alderwoman Mitz is a no. Alderman Spazato. Alderman Spazato is a no. Alderman Vasquez not present in chambers. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Napolitano is a no. Alderman Riley. Alderman Riley is a no. Alderman Knudsen not present in chambers. Alderman Lawson not present in chambers. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner is a no. Alderwoman Clay not present in chambers. Alderman Martin not present. Alderperson Monae Happenworth not present. Alderwoman Hadden not present. Alderman Silverstein not present in chambers. Alderwoman... President Protam Nugent.
Yes.
President Protam Nugent is a yes.
Okay. The motion to adjourn fails. May I suggest we recess for 30 minutes?
Twenty-five. I have 25. Twenty-three to two... Two yays, 23 nays.
So, if I may repeat, the motion to adjourn failed. May I suggest we recess for 30 minutes? Council stands in recess for 30 minutes.
We'll now have a roll call to establish quorum. Ms. Munoz, please call the roll.
Chairman Viegas.
President.
Vice Chair Mosley. Alderman Lasbado. Alderman Hall. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Chico. Alderwoman Lee. Alderwoman Gutierrez. Alderman Lopez. Alderwoman Tavares. Alderwoman Cruz. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Wagasback. Alderwoman Mitz. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley. Alderwoman Mona Happenworth.
Thank you. Let the record reflect this is a public hearing that is being held pursuant to the requirements of the State of Illinois Special Service Area Tax Law 35 ILCS 200-27-5 as amended from time to time, which I will call the Special.
We are back in session. Madam Clerk, please. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we recess until Tuesday, November 7th at 9:45 a.m.
That motion is out of order until we determine if we have quorum.
I move to appeal the decision of the Chair because quorum. Madam Clerk, please do a quorum roll call. First, we have to determine if there's quorum, and then we can entertain other motions. Chair recognizes Alderman Talafaro.
Then during a quorum, can we just move to add Alderman Irvin, who was not present earlier? Add him, just move to add Alderman Irvin for purposes of establishing a quorum?
Madam Clerk, please call the roll. There is, we have to. Any way you want. Ready? Call the roll, please.
Alderman Lasbada, Alderman Lasbada not present in chambers. Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Hopkins is present. Alderman Dowell, Alderman Dowell not present in chambers. Alder Person Robinson, not present in chambers. Alderman Yancey, not present in chambers. Alderman Hall, not present in chambers. Alderman Mitchell, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Harris, not present in chambers. Alderman Beal. Alderman Beal is present in chambers. Not yet. Alderman Chico, Alderman Chico not present in chambers. Alderwoman Lee, Alderwoman Lee not present in chambers. Alderwoman Ramirez, not present in chambers. Alderman Quinn, Alderman Quinn is present. Alderwoman Gutierrez, not present in chambers. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez is present in chambers. Alderwoman Coleman, Alderwoman Coleman is present in chambers. Alderman Moore.
Present.
Alderman Moore is present in chambers. Alderman Curtis, Alderman Curtis is present in chambers. Alderwoman, Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea is present in chambers. Alderwoman Taylor, not present in chambers. Alderman Mosley, not present in chambers. Alderman Rodriguez, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Tavares.
Present.
Alderwoman Tavares is present. Alderman, Alderwoman Scott.
Present.
Alderwoman Scott is present. Alderman Sigcho Lopez, not present in chambers. Alder Person Fuentes, not present in chambers. Alderman Burnett, not present in chambers. Alderman Irvin, Alderman Irvin is present. Alderman Talia Pharaoh, Alderman Talia Pharaoh is present. Alderwoman Cruz, Alderwoman Cruz is not present. Alderman Cardona, Alderman Cardona is present. Alderman Wagasback, Alderman Wagasback is present. Alder Person Rodriguez Sanchez, not present. Alderman Conway, not present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa, not present. Alderman Viegas, not present. Oh, present, I'm sorry, I didn't see him. Alderman Viegas, present, thank you. Alderwoman Mitz, not present in chambers. Alderman Spazato.
Nick Spazato is here and from the proud and 38th, northwest side, 38th Ward.
Alderman Spazato is present. Alderman Vasquez, not present in chambers. Alderman Napolitano.
Still didn't get a text not to show up, so I'm here.
Alderman Napolitano is present. Alderman Riley, Alderman Riley is present. Alderman Knutson, Alderman Knutson is not present. Alderman Lawson, Alderman Lawson is not present in chambers. Alderman Gardner, Alderman Gardner is present. Alderwoman Clay, Alderwoman Clay is not present. Alderman Martin, Alderman Martin is not present. Alder Person Manay Hoppenworth, Alder Person Manay Hoppenworth not present. Alderwoman Haddon, Alderwoman Haddon is not present in chambers. Alderwoman Silverstein, Alderwoman Silverstein is not present in chambers. President Protemp Nugent, President Protemp Nugent is present. I believe people walked in. Alderman Yancey, Alderman Yancey is present. Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Mitchell is present. Alderman Chico, Alderman Chico is present. Alderman Lee, Alderwoman Lee is present. Alder, Alderman Mosley, Alderman Mosley is present. Is there anyone else in chambers? There are no other Aldermen present in chambers. All right, voting is now closed.
There are 25 members present, so we don't have a quorum. But Alderman Beal, do you have a motion? The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Can you instruct the Sergeant-at-Arms to inform the members in the annex that we have a roll call vote going on because the speakers are not working? I see, I see three people, there are, there are three Aldermen in the annex. Instruct the Sergeant-at-Arms to bring them in.
I'm going to decline that motion. Alderman Beal, do you have a motion?
Well, Madam President, I do have a motion. However, my motion is going to be prolonged because I do have a few things to say while we go and grab the people in the back in order to have a quorum. And so, Madam President, this is a very, very important issue that the people of Chicago are looking to have answers. Yes, Madam President.
Alderman Beal, I believe that your options are to either make a motion to recess or to adjourn, excuse me.
Well, Madam President, knowing that you are giving me a couple of options and the Sergeant-at-Arms is gathering the people in the back that are playing hide-and-go-seek when it comes to the people's business, I'll make a motion that we recess until 9:45 Tuesday morning.
Alderman Beal, might I just suggest perhaps we motion to recess for a time we're not in council?
Well, we don't have council until 10 o'clock.
Okay.
We have, we have council at 10 o'clock Tuesday morning, so I think 9:45 is sufficient time to pass one particular ordinance out of this body as a whole in order to get to the 10 o'clock meeting.
Madam Clerk, can you please take a roll on the matter to recess till Tuesday morning at 9:45?
Up there's Alderman Mitz, we have 26, Madam President. Coleman, was Coleman on the roll? We have Coleman and Mitz here, we have 27.
Madam Clerk, I believe we just need to take the roll to ensure we have quorum.
I, we, excuse me, so we are taking quorum roll call one more time. Okay. Are we ready? Okay. Give us one second to upload it.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
And sorry, I'm sorry, I have to go there, but just have one question. I legitimately don't know the answer to this, and I need law to answer this. We already took a roll call, we already took a. Okay, all right, all right, just go on.
So, Madam Clerk, please take the roll. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Lasbada, not present in.
Madam Clerk, we are recessing till Tuesday at 9:45 a.m. Do we have quorum? Do we have quorum? Okay, Madam Clerk, pardon me, I apologize, I apologize, I'm a little new. Folks in the back, just have a little grace with me. I'm a little new today. I apologize, Alderman Beal. Madam Clerk, please take the roll to, for quorum. I apologize.
Alderman Lasbada, Alderman Lasbada not present in chambers. Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Hopkins is present. Alderwoman Dowell, not present in chambers. Alder Person Robinson, not present in chambers. Alderman Yancey, Alderman Yancey is present. Alderman Hall, not present in chambers. Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Mitchell is present. Alderwoman Harris, not present in chambers. Alderman Beal, Alderman Beal is present. Alderman Chico, Alderman Chico is present. Alderwoman Lee, Alderwoman Lee is present. Alderwoman Ramirez, not present in chambers. Alderman Quinn, Alderman Quinn is present. Alderwoman Gutierrez, not present in chambers. Alderman Lopez, Alderman Lopez is present. Alderwoman Coleman, Alderwoman Coleman is present. Alderman Moore, Alderman Moore is present. Alderman Curtis, Alderman Curtis is present. Alderman O'Shea, Alderman O'Shea is present. Alderwoman Taylor, not present in chambers. Alderman Mosley, Alderman Mosley is not present. Alderman, oh, is present, I'm sorry, Alderman Mosley is present. Alderman Rodriguez, not present. Alderman Tavares, Alderman Tavares is present. Alderwoman Scott, Alderwoman Scott is present. Alderman Sigcho Lopez, not present. Alder Person Fuentes, not present. Alderman Burnett, not present. Alderman Irvin, Alderman Irvin is present. Alderman Talia Pharaoh, Alderman Talia Pharaoh is present. Alderwoman Cruz, not present. Alderman Cardona, Alderman Cardona is present. Alderman Wagasback, Alderman Wagasback is present. Alder Person Rodriguez Sanchez, not present. Alderman Conway, not present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Ramirez Rosa not present. Alderman Viegas, Alderman Viegas is present. Alderwoman Mitz, Alderwoman Mitz is present. Alderman Spazato.
Nick Spazato is here.
Alderman Spazato is present. Alderman Vasquez, not present. Alderman Napolitano.
Proud to be present here with my colleagues.
Alderman Napolitano is present. Alderman Riley.
Still here.
Alderman Riley is present. Alderman Knutson, not present. Alderman Lawson, not present. Alderman Gardner, Alderman Gardner is present. Alderwoman Clay, not present. Alderman Martin, not present. Alder Person Manay Hoppenworth, not present. Alderwoman Haddon, not present. Alderwoman Silverstein, not present. President Protemp Nugent.
I know. President, President.
President Protemp Nugent is present. Voting is now closed.
So, there are 26 members present, we have a quorum. Can I get a motion to allow, sorry, the Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. In accordance with our rules of order and procedure, Rule 59, I move to allow Alderwoman Silverstein, Alderman Burnett, and Alderwoman Dowell, if they are still available, to participate remotely and to be added to the quorum.
Hearing no objection, so moved. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Chairman Chris Talafaro.
Let's bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon. God, we give thanks to your holy name. We thank you for being able to work in this city. We thank you for being able to put the issues of the residents before you and before this council. God, we give thanks for all that you do for us. And God, we ask your mercy, we ask your blessings, and God, we ask your forgiveness. God, we know that we are not perfect people, but as we stand before you, Lord, we ask for your grace. And it is because we are imperfect people, Father, we need that grace. We ask that we can come before you boldly as we present the issues of our public. And we thank you for the opportunity not only to serve you, but to serve the people. I thank you for this opportunity to pray before your holy name, and I pray these things in your son's name. Amen.
Clerk, please read the call of today's special meeting.
The following call for a special meeting of the City Council was filed in the office of the City Clerk on Tuesday, October 31st, 2023, at 10:06 a.m. Clerk Valencia, we, the undersigned members of the City Council of the City of Chicago, do hereby call a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago to be convened on Thursday, November 2nd, 2023, at 10:30 a.m. The special meeting is for the following purpose and no other purpose whatsoever. For the immediate consideration of a resolution authorizing the following referendum question to be submitted to the voters of the entire city of Chicago for the determination if Chicago should continue to keep its designation as a sanctuary city, R2023-0004224. For the immediate consideration of a resolution authorizing the following referendum question to be submitted to the voters of the entire city of Chicago for the determination if Chicago shall increase the number of public mental health clinics, R2023-0005108. For the immediate consideration of a resolution authorizing the following referendum question to be submitted to the voters of the entire city of Chicago for the determination if Chicago shall create flooding mitigation and response plan, R2023-0005109. Signed, Anthony Beal, Alderman 9th Ward, Marty Quinn, Alderman 13th Ward, Raymond Lopez, Alderman 15th Ward, Silvana Tavares, Alderwoman 23rd Ward, Anthony Napolitano, Alderman 41st Ward.
We will now have public comment.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. The first speaker today is Beverly Chan.
Hi, my name is Beverly, and, but I not speak really good English, and I want to speak my language, but I don't understand why they put the 10 and, and the city, too much people, and it fuck up all the city. I don't, but, you must speak my language, okay? I don't, but, you must speak my language, okay? 但是呢影响很大影响细路老人甚至全个美国我来到美国三十年但是为什么我们我们住在这个国家大家都都开心现在整到个个都在好像好彷徨怎么样你没有这个本事我觉得我好心痛因为一开始我来到美国我好开心不知道我不知道政府为什么会是这样我得给更多税出去先可以去帮人哋
Thank you, Ms. Chan. At this, at this point, thank you, Ms. Chan. At, at this point, Alderman Lee will translate in summary.
I, uh,陈太，多谢你今日来同我哋讲 Okay, I'm gonna translate. I understood most of what she said. I'm probably not gonna get every detail. But in summary, what she said is she's been in this country for 30 years, and she's worked very hard for the things that she has in her home. And she, she sees that our country right now is falling apart. That there are people that, that there are people that need help in this country already. And what we're doing right now is not actually helping other people. We have to be able to help our own before we can help other people. Because there, there is, and she said, that there doesn't seem to be any hope right now in, in our city.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is, our next speaker is Jacqueline Zaniga.
How disrespectful to be pulling hairs to reconvene. What can be more pressing than the current matters at hand? There was a third unconsidered party that did not stand on this side, consisting of more than concerned citizens representing various neighborhoods within the city of Chicago, who also have my full support. I could discuss the prestigiousness of my family or the amazing neighborhood where I grew up. I am not here to earn your respect. I am here to describe the imagery of a Chicagoan life. When I was 11, I was exposed to children using drugs and alcohol. At 13, I had a gun to my head. On the night of my 18th birthday, I was jumped by three women and one man. I had 30-something hits to my head, and I was unrecognizable. Later that year, I was chased out of Oz Park, and after an excessive car chase, it was approximately 18 city blocks. In Lincoln Park, the other driver was responsible for reimbursing me for breaking my windshield and had gotten a slap on the wrist with court supervision for a year. Later years of my life can be condensed into school and putting work into the home I have now. I did not expect for my neighborhood to be the main discussion for developing a tent facility for 3,500 migrants from another country, seeking asylum countries away from our own. We are already spread thin and have enough on our plates, as you can tell from the brief that has been my life. It has not been easy. I am grateful and blessed to still be alive to talk to you here today. I personally haven't had gas since July 10th. My gas meters were relocated from the inside of my house to the outside of my house, as were the rest of the houses on my street, and they didn't test for leaks before turning them back on. So who's to say there aren't various leaks in other houses on my street that had the same work done? I have personally taken it upon, taken it upon myself to help those within my community. Speaking on behalf of a friend, she was let down by the judicial system when a felon that committed another felony with a firearm was re-released on a low bond and murdered her 16-year-old son. When I think about immigration, I think about all the ones in the past that have come here with the same sort of work ethic, have come here with the same sort of pride. They have gotten just as much education as they could extinguish from their home countries and hope to continue to better themselves here for their well-being, for the life of their families, and future generations to come. We have not only invested financially into our communities, we have invested our lives. When people look at me, they say derogatory things in regard, in regard to me being brown, living in this city anyway. I've heard just about everything. I do not let that affect me or hinder me in any sort of way. And I think in regard to that, we need to put ethnic backgrounds aside. We are here as Americans. Citizens are not. We need to help the people that are already here, the undocumented for years already implanted into our society. We do not want a sanctuary city. We do not want a sanctuary state.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker today is Zoe Lee.
I'm gonna try not to curse, but y'all, man, like... I've been researching VODI Act 29. And this is exactly what's going on. Only time, only thing this time is the Hispanics versus the blacks. And we don't have that strong black leadership that we had with Harold Washington back then. So y'all are letting the Hispanics do whatever they want to do, keep saying we gotta have dignity, but the blacks aren't doing enough in this, in, in your leadership skills. So what's the point of being an alderperson if y'all aren't gonna be for the community? That makes no sense. Yes, it's starting to become a race war, but at the end of the day, I know who gonna win because we built this. Okay? This is unconstitutional. This is inhumane. And to come here and to continue to see more Hispanics and Latinos get jobs than, than blacks here is a disrespect. It's a punch in the face. You want us to continue to understand and see the problem, but y'all don't see the problem in, in the black culture. Black people are the influence. We wouldn't, y'all, nobody would be here if it wasn't for us. Okay? This is a whole, and it's a whole new generation. This social media, this now, like, you're not gonna allow this to happen. And we're not gonna allow this to happen because we're gonna force you to do the right thing. And if not, y'all getting out of here. I was in Georgia when they flipped that state blue for the first time. I will knock on every senior's door and make them hold their vote. This place will flip red. It'll be a historical moment. Because y'all not paying attention to them anyway. They're getting displaced. Y'all don't care, but y'all trying to find, y'all trying to find housing for, for, for Venezuelans, for Latinos, for all that. Y'all, y'all keep sending them over here when they need to go back. Y'all, one time have y'all sent ICE there? ICE need to come. There's prostitution, there's prostitution that's behind, there's prostitution that's behind all of these police districts. I live in Streeterville, it's prostitution right up the street. I mean, it's, yeah, it's, 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 it's a disrespect. And y'all continue to allow this to happen, like, like, Mayor Johnson is the most hated. And he's gonna continue to be hated. Only people that like him is teachers and some of y'all. Okay? Tax, I'm trying to tell you, my tax money is not gonna continue to allow this. Y'all need to find our money. You need to put more, more, more things in our, our neighborhoods. Y'all aren't doing nothing. Small businesses, only thing you're giving it to is Latinos, 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 Latinos. Nah! It's, 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 it's more than that. This is the most segregated city. And, and the, the United States is looking at us. We are not.
Ms. Lee, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker today is Linda Johnson. Our next speaker today is Linda Johnson. Our next speaker today is Maurice Janusus. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
Thank you. The floor is open. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin. Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President.
Did I screw up? Pardon me one second, Alderman Lopez, I screwed something up. This concludes public comment. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez. Thank you.
No worries, Madam President. I would like to move to include Alderman Conway, who has joined us for the purposes of quorum.
Yep, we've included him in.
And Chairman, oh. Oh, I'm sorry, forgive me. And in accordance with Rule 59 of the Rules of Order and Procedure, to include Alderwoman, Alderwoman Michelle Harris by remote means and participation and in addition to the quorum.
Hearing no objection, so moved. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, we have three items on the agenda. However, my desire is only to ask for one item to be voted on in the affirmative. Unlike other people in this body, I don't wish to silence the people from having a voice as far as the Bring Home Chicago ordinance. I want the voters to hear that ordinance and have a chance to vote on it. However, I do believe that we need to have the people also to vote on whether or not they want to remain a sanctuary city. The reason I have brought this with some of my colleagues to the floor is not to eliminate Chicago as a sanctuary city. But what it is, is to find some kind of compromise and threshold to stop the bleeding that we're undertaking right now. When you look at what the city is dealing with, we're spending, when we had 12,000 migrants, we were spending $31 million a month at that time. We have 20,000 migrants today. So what is the price tag on that now? And we can't get solid answers to what is costing us right now. Now, we're being asked to vote for a budget that we can't get answers to as far as how much money we're gonna be potentially spending next year on the migrants. We're saying, we're hoping we get money from the state. I'm hoping we get money from the federal government. I'm hoping money just falls out of the sky. But those are hopes and dreams. We have a physical responsibility to vote on a budget that is sound going forward to get us through 2024. And the budget that's being presented to us does not solve that problem. And so, all I'm asking is that we give the people of this great city of Chicago a chance to have a voice on this issue. Now, I guarantee you that if Harold Washington was here today, what he signed into law as an executive order is not what he intended for today. And so when people, when people say, well, Harold Washington did this, times were different. We didn't have people coming to this city by the thousands. Now, when you look at what else is happening in this country, we have other democratic cities, Denver, California, LA, sending their people to Chicago, New York. They're sending their migrants to Chicago. Why? Because they saying we can't take anymore. Chicago has yet to say, we can't take anymore. We have to draw the line somewhere. It's a diversion to continue to say, this is a federal problem, we need help from the federal government. Yeah, we know that. But while we're waiting for the federal government to act, we need to be doing something here at home to protect us. Now, we don't even know the people who are coming to Chicago. The people that are coming here, we don't know if they have criminal backgrounds. We don't know if they're child molesters. We don't know if they're murderers. We don't know, we don't know anything concrete about the people coming here. Now, when you look at what's happening, Venezuela are emptying their jails and telling them to walk to the border. So they're coming to Chicago. We already have enough crime here in the city of Chicago. We have enough crime here that we're dealing with. And so, I can go on and on. But Madam President, and I think you're doing a wonderful job up there, may I add? You're doing a wonderful job. This is just a question, a non-binding question, to just ask the people who are paying this $30 and $40 million a month, if they want to continue down this road, or do we want to make our elected officials to try to do something different? Now, I've said this before. If you give me three meals, housing, childcare, education, a voucher for $9,000, you know what? I come to Chicago too. And that's what they're doing. They're telling people, and they're sending money back to Chicago, I mean, back to Venezuela, to come to Chicago because they're saying, hey, the good times are rolling now. They're taking care of everybody. Now, when we have, when we have Venezuelans that are driving cars, where'd they get a driver's license? Where did they get insurance from? And then you have Venezuelans being caught with drugs and guns. Where they getting them from? I have a bleeding heart for the people who are coming here that are honestly trying to do better for themselves. I'm with that. But I'm gonna tell you one thing. I'm with my people more. Okay? I'm with my people more. And so, all I'm asking is to just put this question on the ballot, non-binding, non-binding, in order to give the people of this city a voice that they have not had because nobody ever asked the city of Chicago, do we want to be a sanctuary city? Do we want to be a welcoming city? And I'm gonna close on this. This is my third closing. Sanctuary city, a welcoming ordinance, says nothing about we have to provide services and goods. Sanctuary city, all it says is the city of Chicago will not cooperate, organize with the federal government, detain for people to be deported. That's all it says. So where do we get off saying that we have to spend $30 to $40 million a month that we don't have? Now, if you give me $30 to $40 million a month, my ward will look like the North Side. If you give any alderman on the South and West Side $30 to $40 million a month, you will see a different day. So with that, I'm gonna close. And I just hope that my colleagues, I hope my colleagues see fit to just vote on giving the people a voice that they don't have to see if we want to go down this road. So with that, Madam President, I motion that we pass the first item on the agenda to say whether or not the people of Chicago want to remain a sanctuary city. to say whether or not the people of Chicago want to remain a sanctuary city or not. Thank you.
I just first would like to confirm that Alderman Dowell is still with us on the meeting.
I'm here.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, the chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I call a question. Ask for a roll call vote.
The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
I have a point of order. A point of order supersedes your point, sir. So, while I do want us to come to some resolve here, I would prefer that we come to some resolve in the right way. From yesterday's meeting, we took two items that were deferred and published, that then requires us to come back to the next regularly scheduled council meeting to deal with those items. One of the items that you want to consider today is one of the items that was deferred and published. That's number one. Number two, we don't have 34 members here in order to suspend the rules and take care of any business, because all of this stuff is stuck in committee right now. So unfortunately, I would like to get to where you want to go, Alderman, but I would like for us to do it in a proper way that doesn't render us null and void, null and void in this particular situation. So I would ask that this, that this item be ruled out of order.
The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez. Chair recognizes you, Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I renew my calling of the question and ask for an immediate roll call vote.
Chair Irvin has pointed out that the rules need to be suspended. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? Chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Thank you, Madam President. We, we have a properly issued notice for a special meeting with the sole subject clearly stated. We're in full compliance with the Meetings, Open Meetings Act. I'm not aware of any rule that needs to be suspended in order for us to take action on that item today. If we have to suspend the rules, we should be stating what rule requires suspension, because I personally don't believe there is one. Thank you.
Alderman Hopkins, our rules dictate that this has to go through the committee process. Sorry, Alderman, I haven't recognized you. Just give me, give me a moment. Just to further answer to Alderman Hopkins, pardon me, pardon me, please, to answer your question, Alderman Hopkins, item two was held in the Committee on Rules. But to hear these today, we would need to vote to suspend the rules, and this is under Rules 41 of our Rules of Order and Procedure that states, quote, "All ordinance shall be referred to the appropriate committees and only acted upon by the City Council at a subsequent meeting on the report of the committee," end quote. So this item was held in committee and not reported out. I am ruling that the rules need to be suspended. The request to repeal the, this ruling is out of order. The state law is not appealable issue because it explicitly gives this right to the Alders to defer a report to the next regularly scheduled meeting. We're gonna stand at ease for two minutes, please.
Yeah?
Yeah?
We are back in session.
We are back in session. We are back in session. We are back in session. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez-Rosa. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez-Rosa. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez-Rosa.
Madam-- 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 Madam President, thank you so much for recognizing me. Madam President, thank you so much for recognizing me. Madam President, thank you so much for recognizing me. Counting who's in the chamber and who is at the Committee on Econ, Capital, and Technology Development, Counting who's in the chamber and who is at the Committee on Econ, Capital, and Technology Development, Counting who's in the chamber and who is at the Committee on Econ, Capital, and Technology Development, it appears that there are not 26 people here to continue this business. it appears that there are not 26 people here to continue this business. it appears that there are not 26 people here to continue this business. Therefore then, I request a quorum call. Therefore then, I request a quorum call. Therefore then, I request a quorum call. And pending that quorum call, assuming there are not enough people, And pending that quorum call, assuming there are not enough people, And pending that quorum call, assuming there are not enough people, then I motion that we reconvene Tuesday at 9:45 a.m. then I motion that we reconvene Tuesday at 9:45 a.m. then I motion that we reconvene Tuesday at 9:45 a.m.
Recognizes-- 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 The Chair-- The Chair-- The Chair-- Pardon me. Pardon me. Pardon me. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. Two things. Two things. Two things. First off, there was already a motion as well as an appeal on the floor First off, there was already a motion as well as an appeal on the floor First off, there was already a motion as well as an appeal on the floor before the Alderman of the 35th Ward spoke. before the Alderman of the 35th Ward spoke. before the Alderman of the 35th Ward spoke. Two, we're not even sure if he's in the room because technically he doesn't count towards quorum Two, we're not even sure if he's in the room because technically he doesn't count towards quorum Two, we're not even sure if he's in the room because technically he doesn't count towards quorum or the roll call for today because he's been bouncing in and out and is listed as not being present. or the roll call for today because he's been bouncing in and out and is listed as not being present. or the roll call for today because he's been bouncing in and out and is listed as not being present. And I haven't heard him being included in this conversation today. And I haven't heard him being included in this conversation today. And I haven't heard him being included in this conversation today. So I would refer back to the original appeal So I would refer back to the original appeal So I would refer back to the original appeal of the decision of the Chair by Alderman Beal so that we can proceed. of the decision of the Chair by Alderman Beal so that we can proceed. of the decision of the Chair by Alderman Beal so that we can proceed. And if all-- And if all-- And if all-- The Alder-- The Alder-- The Alder--
And they're going to look into that. Okay. So, let's go. Alderman-- Alder Person Robinson, not present in chambers. Alderman Yancey, not present. Alderman Hall, not present. Alderman Mitchell-- Alderman Mitchell is present. Chairwoman Harris, not present in chambers. Alderman Beal-- Alderman Beal is present. Alderman Chico-- Alderman Chico is present. Alderwoman Lee-- Alderwoman Lee is present. Alderwoman Ramirez, not present. Alderman Quinn-- Alderman Quinn is present. Alderwoman Gutierrez, not present. Alderman Lopez-- Alderman Lopez is present. Alderwoman Coleman, not present. Alderman Moore-- Alderman Moore is present. Alderman Curtis-- Alderman Curtis is present. Alderman O'Shea-- Alderman O'Shea is present. Alderwoman Taylor, not present. Alderman Mosley, not present. Alderman Rodriguez, not present. Alderwoman Tabarez-- Alderwoman Tabarez is present. Alder-- Alderwoman Scott--
I'm present for the fourth time.
Alderwoman Scott is present. Alderman Sigcho Lopez, not present. Alder Person Fuentes, not present. Alderman Burnett, not present. Alderman Irvin--
Present.
Alderman Irvin is present. Alderman Talia Pharoah--
Present.
Alderman Talia Pharoah is present. Alderwoman Cruz, not present. Alderman Cardona--
Present.
Alderman Cardona is present. Alderman Wagasback--
Present.
Alderman Wagasback is present. Alder Person Rodriguez Sanchez-- Alder Person Rodriguez Sanchez, not present. Alderman Conway--
Present.
Con-- Alderman Conway is present. Alderman Ramirez-Rosa--
Present.
Alderman Ramirez-Rosa is present. Alderman Viegas-- Alderman Viegas is present. Alderwoman Mitz-- Alderwoman Mitz, not present. Alderman Spizato--
Nick Spizato is still here for the valid quorum we started with.
Alderman Spizato is present. Alderman Vasquez, not present. Alderman Napolitano--
Present for the fourth time.
Alderman Napolitano is present. Alderman Riley--
Still here.
Alderman Riley is present. Alderman Knudsen, not present. Alderman Lawson, not present. Alderman Gardner--
Present.
Alderman Gardner is present. Alderwoman Clay, not present. Alderman Martin, not present. Alder Person Monae Happenworth, not present. Alderwoman Haddon, not present. Alderwoman Silverstein, not present. President Protemp Nugent--
Present.
President Protemp Nugent is present. Did I miss anyone? Alderman Mosley-- Alderman Mosley is present. Did anyone else come in?
We have 25. Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank--
Yeah, she's counting that people.
Hold on. Thank you, Mad-- Thank you, Madam President. Just-- Fine. Just as a point of order, this body has already made and approved a motion allowing several people to participate remotely once the initial quorum was made. Nothing in our rules declares their presence voided out by a new quorum call, which means everybody from Silverstein, Burnett, Dowell, and Harris are all to be added to our roll call because this body approved it in accordance with the rules of order and procedure.
At this point. And so we are limited-- Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez-- Uh, Ramirez-Rosa.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Given that we do not have quorum per state law, we cannot proceed. Therefore then, if it-- I believe we should return back Tuesday at 9:45.
There's been a motion to lay it on the table. There's been a motion to lay it on the table by-- Sorry. There's a motion to-- Okay. Alderman Lopez-- Alderman Lopez, as we don't have quorum, our options-- Our options are to-- Hang on. Sorry. So Alderman Lopez, as we don't have quorum, our options are to recess or adjourn. If we don't recess, then we adjourn.
President-- Is-- What is-- What is the number that the clerk has produced?
So the clerk-- Per the-- Pardon me, folks. The roll call per the clerk just now was 25.
We have 25 people with four people who we've given the right to vote to.
But we don't have--
You are intentionally disenfranchising three black Aldermen right now. You are choosing to disenfranchise three African-Americans who were elected to represent people in this body. We have already voted to approve their presence.
Alderman Lopez, our-- Our only options with 25 that roll-- Pardon me, folks. Pardon me.
There is nothing in this book that says a quorum call invalidates their presence here.
Folks, under-- Sergeant at Arms, could you kindly help us? So-- So-- Thank you for your patience. Under Rule 59, we have to have quorum-- There was a fresh quorum call, though. And under Rule 59, without quorum, we cannot take into account the online presence.
I am asked us to be here.
Alderman Lopez, I kindly ask you to-- Offer a motion to recess or adjourn. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Madam President, point of order. I would like for Corporation Council to issue an opinion on why those people cannot be counted as present when they were initially added to the roll under Rule 59. I would like to have Corporation Council give us a ruling.
So-- Under Rule 59, when we took a quorum call, quorum was found lacking. Thus, we can't take into account the four folks that are participating virtually.
Respectfully, when we have a quorum, we voted to allow four people into the room. After that point, those people are allowed because we voted to give them the authority to vote and to be present from that point on. You cannot unilaterally say now it's convenient for us, we're going to exclude you because we don't want you in the room. So, again, I ask for a ruling from our Corporation Council on that issue.
You can give me-- Give me one minute.
Yeah.
So we did not have a quorum, and so remote participation is not allowed under the rule. Under-- Right now, we have two choices. We can either adjourn or recess. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Madam-- Madam President, forgive me, but we actually have three choices. And I move for the selection of a new temporary presiding officer of this meeting. I-- Fine. Let me-- Let me-- Let me clarify.
Your motion is out of order.
I move that-- I move that Brendan Riley be selected as temporary presiding officer of this meeting, which is well within our rights during a special meeting or when we're still trying to organize our meeting. Per the rules-- Per Rule 2 for the selection of a temporary presiding officer. A simple majority of those present, I push for-- I move Brendan Riley be named by this body to preside over this special meeting. And ask for a roll call vote.
Alderman Lopez, this violates Rule 2 of the orders. We've offered to either recess or adjourn. And without an option to recess, we are going to adjourn.
I appeal the decision of the Chair to declare picking a presiding officer out of order.